Are you good? All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City Council Committee of the Whole of July 8, 2024. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Brereton.
Here.
Corey.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Gramkowski.
Here.
Mickey.
Here.
Mahal.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ton Preston.
Okay, thank you. Under public comment, we have two individuals that choose to want to speak. Lloyd Roberts, Lloyd, you want to come up here? Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Brad.
Good.
How are you?
I'm fine.
Good. I love your hair, by the way, and it looks really nice. All right, I'm just gonna do two things, talk about two things tonight. First, I'm gonna share my story with talking to a nice lady, she was very nice, in the office over here, the planning office over here, about getting a permit to start a business in my home, to have a home office business there. The thing is, I can't, because I need a dumpster for the business, but because it's a residence, I'm not allowed the dumpster, so I can't have the dumpster, so I can't do the business, because it's not allowed. So, it's kinda cutting into the way I want to do money, make money, and, you know, it's not a good thing. So, the way it went down, I just, I just went in, I said, I'd like to get a, you know, permit to do a home business, and she said, okay, what is it? And I explained to her that I wanted to do vacuum cleaner repair. She looked it up to make sure that it was okay. She said, as long as it's not doing motors, which it isn't, it's, it's just doing electrical and, and, you know, basic repairs of vacuum cleaners, which I've done before, you know. But in order to do that, I need a dumpster to get rid of the materials, because your company that you selected will not take electric motors. They will not take whole vacuum cleaners, you have to tear them down, break them down into pieces, in order for it to go in. And once you do that with one, it fills up that little container, and there's just no way to fit anything else in it. So, I said, well, that's why I would need a dumpster. And she said, well, you can't have a dumpster, because it's a residence. And I said, but it's gonna be used for a business situation. And she says, nope, it's still against the rules. Anyway, that was a problem. Second, there's a gentleman that lives across the street from me. He's a truck driver. He drives a big orange truck. I know you guys have seen it, it's on Pearl Street. He parks it just off the street, because they, he was parking it on the street, and they told him he can't do that, so he's been parking it in that driveway at an angle. Nice guy, he's home two days, every two or three weeks, two days. He's not home long enough to produce any garbage. They still charged him a hundred dollars. They're still making him take this material, even though he doesn't have any garbage to dispose of. So, I'm beginning to wonder about the hundred, the ninety-nine point nine percent that you were saying earlier, mayor, last week, mayor. So, what I'm gonna do, just, you know, to satisfy myself, because one thing my dad always said was, you know, trust but verify. So, that's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna verify. I'm gonna make up my own survey and then go to different houses around in my area, within walking distances of my house, and I'm gonna ask them some questions about the garbage, and kinda get a survey going, and figure out exactly what their, what their input is. So, I'll share that with you next week, when I have that all done, okay? And that's all I have for this week, all right? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. John Albertini.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to go over an email that I received from a lady that lives in my ward. Her name is Natalia Bosanova. Her subject on this was waste management. She'd called me the other day, and then she called me twice today. She was trying to state that she doesn't spend the summers here, she spends them up north, which is kinda like what I do. And she wanted to know if she can get suspended service. And I told her, well, I'd check into it, you know, and find out for her. And, well, she had called earlier today, and the waste management told her, no, you have to, we don't suspend service, you have to pay for the garbage. So, she called me, and I said, well, you know, I don't find that to be, I heard it, you can't get suspended service. So, I contacted the city clerk, and I asked her about it, and she said that she thought that, yes, you can't have suspended service, and that she would check into it and get back to me. Well, meanwhile, the lady had called me a second time, and said she called the waste management company again, and they still told her there was no suspended service, she had to pay the garbage. She was very frustrated. I said, well, I understood there is, so I says, I'll clear it up at this evening's meeting. And speaking to Sarah prior to the meeting, she stated that she did talk to the waste management, and that there is a suspended service for garbage. It would've been nice to be, I guess, clearer to the people when we presented this to begin with, so they knew and didn't get all nervous. I was waiting for the snowbirds come to start calling me when they go for the six months. Anyways, I just wanted to get it on record that there is a suspended service. The lady will be contacted by waste management, so that she's in agreement that she can't suspend her service, which is, that's a wonderful thing, compared to, you know, not being able to opt out. Well, that's, that's another different story, but at least she can suspend her service. I appreciate Sarah taking the time to get this answer for me, and hopefully this lady gets her problem solved, and hopefully it reduces the amount of calls I get come winter from the snowbirds, so.
Yeah, it, you said waste management, I think you misspoke.
Well, she, her, it was about waste management, her, the management of her waste.
Okay.
Is how she was wording it.
Okay.
Not the company.
And, so, whenever we had, this contract, part of the discussion was, there are individuals, it's vacation, they spend the winters in Florida, Arizona, what have you, they always had an opportunity to call and give the dates of the times that they were not going to be at their home here in Belvidere and suspend their service. So, that's nothing new, and certainly she can. She would provide them with the times that she wouldn't need service, the time she's gonna be gone, and they would, they would put that in accordingly.
Yeah, I was, I was just upset that she had to call twice and still got a no, you know, and that it would've been nice, they acknowledged her right away, and been a little more congenial to this woman, I mean, because I don't.
I don't know what that conversation entailed.
Oh, no, I don't either. I wasn't there, I'm just reciting back and forth what our conversation was. But anyways, that's fine, at least we know there's a suspended service.
Your honor.
Alderman Snow.
So, I would like to make an official request that, on the next Committee of the Whole agenda, that we have on the agenda discussion about the waste disposal ordinance as it pertains to the single hauler.
Hmm, how so?
So, we can have an open discussion about it on an, as an agenda item, and.
We can have an open discussion about it now?
I would just assume have it on the agenda.
Okay. You know, I will mention that, you know, the, as I had said, the overwhelming majority of the individuals who, who did have garbage service in this community, I think we had seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-three, or seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-three, I believe, single family or two-family households in the city of Belvidere. This contract was something that we had talked about, we had bid, and the reason that we did that was because many of the individuals were paying, they had a hundred percent, and I know I've said this before, and I'll say it again, they had a hundred percent increase in their garbage in the last three to four years, and their costs had risen, along with everything else, along with the price of groceries, along with the price of fuel, along with the CPI index. Consumer Price Index was twenty-one point three percent. All of that increased. So, their questions to me, and mine to the council, was, is there any way that we can bid this out for franchise, and what do other communities do? We had explored that. What other communities do, and we had talked about those other communities, and I had actually gotten a contract from one of our neighboring communities, and we reviewed that contract, and they said that, obviously, nobody had four garbage trucks going down the street, picking up on my street, picking up my garbage, picking up the neighbors' a different truck, picking up the neighbor's garbage, a different one picking up Alderman Snow's garbage, and a different one picking up Alderman Stevens' garbage. That's completely, they don't, they don't do that. And there's a reason, because we pay to have the streets that are destroyed by repetitive trucks. Now, when I started this, I had one alderwoman who said, I love my garbage man. Well, you know what? That may be, and I like my garbage man just fine, too. However, it's not about me, and it's not about one individual, it's about what we can do to reduce an exorbitant increase on the price of waste hauling in Belvidere. And we explored that. And we signed a, we had a franchise agreement, it was approved, it has been inked. Now, if there's something that you want to undo, then put it on the agenda, and we'll make it short and sweet, because we have a contract, as I had said, the overwhelming majority of the people have. I had one individual, as you may recall, that came in here, and he was picking up garbage for not only his mom, his sister, and he was hauling garbage, even under the old contract, where we had four garbage haulers. Even under that contract, that's illegal. You shouldn't do that, you can't do that, you don't have a, you need a license to haul. And, but since we approved it, I think I've probably had seventy, we've had sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five complaints. A lot of those individuals never had garbage. I don't know what they were doing with it, but I think the other communities recognize that if you own a home, there's a pretty good chance that you have garbage. And what are you doing with it if, if you don't have a hauler? So, when you compute, and you can figure it out yourself, if you have a calculator in front of you, you can figure it out, if you have seventy-eight, hundred and ninety-three residents that have waste hauling, divide that into sixty-five or seventy-five calls, and you'll see that the majority of the people have garbage service, like most everybody, and they have it picked up. And they're, now they're gonna have it picked up for, in some cases, half of what they were paying. So, the question was, how do you save, how does government ever save money for their residents? How do you do that? Well, I've never heard of anything where they do it. And unless you can clue me in on where they have, I'll be more than happy to take it to heart. But this is an example where we could help people. A lot of the people that were calling and complaining about the price of their garbage were users, they had garbage service in Belvidere. They had it, and they were paying a lot more than what they're paying now, and they were being taken advantage of. So, the question was, how do we represent people in the community? Not everybody, you're never gonna get a hundred percent, no matter what you do, and I think every alderman is fully aware of that, you're never gonna please everybody. But how do you make it so you actually cut a service? And not only did we cut the service price, I also had people calling me from Boone County, and they said, mayor, you know, why don't we get, we're in, we're in Algiers subdivision, we're on the other side of, of Genoa Road, why don't we get the same deal that the city had? We have a post office that says, Belvidere, Illinois. Well, they're in the county, they're not in the city. However, Rock River is also picking up garbage on the west side of Belvidere Road, and they agreed to pick their garbage up, and they're gonna save them money as well. They were paying a hundred and three to a hundred and twenty dollars there, and they're gonna be paying ninety. So, even the people in the county wanted, wanted to know, how did you do that? And can we take advantage of that? So, I want to air this all out tonight, because, you know, I think if, the longer, the longer this goes on, when you're trying to, I don't know what you're trying to accomplish with having, go over this, but we have signed a contract, and we do have a certain, or we don't have a certain immunity to break a contract without cause. But the question is, also, to me, was, since the price of garbage went up one hundred percent in the last three and a half years, or four years, then with this contract, it's a five-year contract, instead of a hundred percent increase, since we've had this administration, this last administration that has a CPI index at twenty percent, much more for food, much more for fuel, and much more for garbage. So, the question was, how do we make this inflation-proof? And we did that with this contract. We have a five-year contract that's gonna have a cap at three and a half percent on garbage. So, in four years, you're not gonna get socked with another hundred percent increase, or five years, instead, you're gonna get seventeen and a half percent is the cost. So, we've actually helped residents to prevent what they have suffered with that brought this to the council. The council had voted not to have an opt-out clause on this, and, you know, that's fine. I think everybody knew that after the individuals spoke, and it wouldn't have been just Rock River, it would've been whoever would've been the low bidder, or the one that won the franchise, you know, in the other communities, they don't do that, because the preponderance, the majority of people are gonna be able to take advantage of it. You're never gonna get everybody, but you are gonna save, in this case, and I, I believe that's correct, ninety-nine point nine five percent, at least when I compute it to the, to the, to the calls I had complaining, that, that will be it. Now, there may be some people that haul their garbage, there may be some people that took their garbage for their neighbor, there may be some people that I know for a fact that put their garbage in their neighbor's container and didn't pay anything for it. And they, they actually victimized their neighbor. And so, with that being the case, for, for this contract, for this franchise to work, everybody had to partake. That's how franchise agreements work. And so, the overwhelming majority of the people are going to save a lot of money. But you're never gonna please everybody. So, I don't know, Alderman Snow, an answer to your question, I don't know what your goal is here, but, yeah.
At this point, it is to allow for an opt-out clause. When Mr. Brereton made the motion for opting out, it wasn't clarified that it was, and I don't know what his intent, but I gathered it was interpreted, that it was to opt out and have a second or third or fourth trash hauler participate. In this case, we just need to be able to have people opt out and not have service when they either, A, don't need it, or they don't generate anything, or you have vacant houses that don't generate anything, and they don't need to be saddled with an expense. And so, we need to have that. Now, if that.
Let me answer your question real quick, as long as you comment it.
If I might, if I might continue. If that's a matter of having them bring something to the council, and once a month, we go through and say, hey, okay, you have a valid reason to opt out, and we give them the option, and we let Rock River know that they need to opt out.
Isn't in the contract.
So, again.
Yeah, isn't in the contract.
We, we need to be able to, and you've had conversations with them, I gathered, so it sounds like if they're amenable, and that we're just not willy-nilly doing this, and if somebody has to go through a step in order to accomplish the mission, then let's see about doing that. But I'd like to have a discussion in an open forum on an agenda.
Yeah. And so, just so you're aware, that if people have a vacant, if there's a vacancy at their home, and they don't have anybody living in there, yes, they call, and they say, I don't have anybody living at this residence, and, and if they don't, in fact, then yes, they won't be, they don't have a garbage pickup, of course not. So, that's the other thing. So, you know, I, I guess, you know, you can put it on the agenda, you know, that's fine. Yeah, we can put it on the agenda. But I think we want to make sure not, you know, there are individuals, like I said, the gentleman who spoke last week had mentioned that he had a dumpster, and he put grass, and he put grass clippings, and he dumped motors and whatever in, in his garbage can, and, or in a dumpster. And in a residence, if you're a single family, that's never been allowed in the city of Belvidere. So, if they've been doing that, they've been doing it, they've been doing it against the ordinances that we have. So, I, I think we want to, we want to be clear about, you know, the majority of the individuals, the majority of the seniors especially, are going to save money. There isn't very many times that you get a chance to help them do that. This is one of them. Alderman Freeman, Alderman Freeman?
Thank you. So, since we are, you did say, open discussion tonight about this, I just wanted to clarify, so if you go to Florida in the winter for six months, and you call them to suspend your service, that doesn't just mean they're not gonna pick up, that means you won't be billed for those six months either, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Well, your understanding in actually what they do, I'd like that clarified.
Do you have other information that they, they're charging?
No, I don't have any information, that's why I'm asking.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, so if you could verify that for us, that would be great. The other thing is, I, I did want to reiterate, because I didn't know you could opt out like that, but there are people that do have rental properties, that people have moved out, and they're vacant for a couple months while they go in and paint, and re-carpet, and fix up, and do what they need to do, so they would be able to opt out for that. I voted for the opt-out, and I thought this was a bad idea from the get-go, as you know. I feel like, you know, my bill was a hundred and nine dollars, and I can bring it in if you don't believe me, and it went to ninety-nine, so I saved ten dollars over three months, that's three dollars a month, barely a candy bar. So, to me, all of the calls I've gotten, all of the questions I've been asked, all of the hassle that this has caused, is, is really, for three dollars a month.
That's not what it is.
That's what mine is, I'm telling you, I'll bring in my bill.
You can, but the bill.
It's a hundred and nine dollars, and it went to ninety-nine, and now I don't have my guy.
Look at your, look at your ninety-nine dollar bill, it's sixty, it's seventy-six dollars and five cents if you're, seventy-six dollars and five, five cents if you're not a senior citizen. If you're a senior citizen, it's sixty-seven dollars and five cents.
Oh, you know my old man's a senior.
Over, yeah, well, then it would be sixty-seven, not ninety-nine, it's not ninety-nine.
Well, we got the bill for ninety-nine.
Yeah, that's for four months, not three months. So, you were paying a hundred and nine for three months, now you're paying sixty-seven for three months. So, it's much more than nine dollars, Alderman Freeman, you, do the math.
It's not worth it, whatever it is.
I mean, it may not be worth it to you, if you don't want to save.
And, you know, if even, if this caused even one person to be disenfranchised, or a hardship, and I've talked to, I don't know how many seniors that this has caused a hardship for, then it never should've been done.
Really? Well, I think a lot of the people that are gonna pay sixty-seven dollars instead of a hundred and nine, or a hundred and forty-four, in some cases, I think they would disagree with you. Now, the individuals, the individuals.
But, a lot of these seniors were using the sticker, as my mother did, for, you know, three dollars, and she would put one bag out every two weeks, so it was costing her six dollars a month for her garbage, which now, she's gotta pay twenty-three. And I talked to a woman that said, my, my eighty-five-year-old mother needs to take three hundred dollars a year out of her grocery budget. Like, what the heck?
Well, like I said, we can put it on the agenda, and we'll certainly discuss it. And, okay, thank you.
One more question.
Alderman Albertini.
Thanks. Because we were talking about statistics, you were earlier, about how many people called you, and in conjunction to how many people actually live in the city, I think a lot of us here are fielding calls that you don't get. So, my suggestion would be to the aldermen who are fielding calls, like I do, or says she does, that we should redirect the calls to the mayor, so that he has a more accurate percentage or figure.
Yeah. And, you know, John, I think what you did on this vote, I think, was part of the issue. You know, you live out at Four Seasons, and you have, what, twelve or fourteen or eighteen dollar a month garbage service, or a quarter garbage service, I believe. So, you have a significant savings out there. But a lot of people in Ward One don't live at your mobile home park. They don't live there. But yet, you know, you had an issue with saving them the rest of the ward money. And so, I think, you know, that's a little bit disingenuous. You know, you're, you have an advantage that you have in your park, where you can only have one hauler. You only have one choice. They come out in your park, and they pick it up, and one hauler comes out, and accordingly, you have, you have a contract at Four Seasons, and the residents there, the seniors are, have a much lower rate. That's essentially what this has done. That's the same thing, only this is the rest of the ward that you're supposed to represent, the rest of the ward, not just Four Seasons. So, I think when we talk about, for the greater good, you can have, you can have every, every individual, they can call me, that's fine, and I can be, I can explain this as well. But I also think you have to keep it, there has to be a numeric around it, and when you figure out the numerics of the number of single-family or two-family residences that we have, the majority of the individuals are gonna save a lot of money. And many other communities, every other community does this. So, this isn't like we're rein, we're inventing the wheel here. We're not. All we're doing is we're saving the residents money on their garbage service, we're also saving them money on road repair, the same reason that Four Seasons don't allow multiple trucks out at Four Seasons, because they don't want their roads tore up. Well, the residents, through taxpayers, they pay for the roads here that get tore up. We will pay for them. And we also have an inflation that has been outrageous, and I don't think I have to tell anybody in this room, or anybody listening, that that's a fact. And anybody who's buying groceries, anybody who's buying fuel, anybody who's buying drugs, pharmaceuticals, anybody, and garbage included, understands that across the board, twenty-one percent, that's what it is. So, everything's more expensive. If there's a chance that we can save the public, then I think that was, that's what we should do.
Yeah, I don't base my decisions on the fact that I live at Four Seasons.
Well, that's what you said.
No, I did not.
Yeah, you did. That's what you said when you voted.
No, I did not, I made a comparison in pricing.
Yeah.
With Four Seasons, but I did not base my decision on voting on the fact that I live at Four Seasons. I do represent the people in my ward, I get calls constantly. My problem was, the, the reason I didn't like the, the idea of it, was because I asked for an open hearing, and you didn't feel we needed one. It wasn't my campaign promise to have garbage, so I decided I didn't want it, because I asked for an open hearing, and I didn't want all this squalling going on, all these people calling. I understand, you feel it's correct, I feel it's not, that's our prerogatives. But it's not based on the fact that I live at Four Seasons. I regret that you keep bringing this up for some reason, I don't know why.
I just now brought it up, what are you talking about?
You just brought it up, you said that I based it on Four Seasons, I didn't, I based the rates, that was all. I didn't base my decision on voting, because I live at Four Seasons. I represent everybody in Ward One, not just my park.
Well, now, everybody has a, has the same right that you have, has the same benefits that you have at Four Seasons.
Actually, they pay more.
Well, they do.
I understand.
But, but that's, that was the best that the contract would do. But at least, there's a significant cost savings. I don't think we wanted to deprive anybody of that. But anyhow, we'll have that discussion, we'll have that discussion. we'll have that discussion, we'll have that discussion as we go forward. Alderman?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, since you agreed to have this put on a next agenda coming up, could we get back to our original agenda that we have for today?
I agree.
I agree. All right, moving on, under public comment, I think that's all we have. Public forum, we have none. Reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Item one, building, planning, zoning on finished business, we have none. Flipping the page, page two, item two, building, planning, zoning, new business. We have item A, is a building department update. Mr. Countryman, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, thank you. For the month of June, we issued a hundred and seven permits for a value of construction of just under two million dollars. Ninety-four of those were residential, thirteen were commercial. We are dealing with a lot of property maintenance. We have, right now, about thirty cases, four in court, code enforcement violations, revenue of seven cases for a value of seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. We issued three houses, new houses. Eight fifty-seven landmark has been sold. They're in the process of installing a racking system and moving in there. Midland Bank is under construction. We are getting ready to finalize the O'Reilly's plan review. Jersey Mike's, Wingstop, Smoothie King, and Jimmy John's are just about at final stage. Project Yukon has begun pouring the floors inside, which is a pretty interesting process, because they're insulating the floor in the very cold sections of the property, and they, they can't take the cement trucks in, so they are bugging one yard at a time, trying to pour a thousand yards a day. That's, we were out there a couple of times, and that's, it's quite a process. MRS has begun underground. Both projects are pouring curbs, doing parking lots. So, once Yukon gets fired up at the parking lots, they'll be pouring about two thousand yards a day of concrete. That's all I have, and I'll entertain. Any questions?
Any questions for Director Countryman? Alderman Moha?
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any new residential construction permits for June?
Currently Deer Hills is really popular, and so is Prairie Place out on Newburgh Road. But as far as Farmington, that's, that's full. River Bend has the condo lots, duplex lots that are under construction right now. So, yeah, Deer Hills, there's talk about John Paquin's property across the street. The townhomes revisiting that area, so that's, that's where concentration is right now.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Alderman Freeman?
Thank you. So, Director Countryman, out there by Project Yukon and General Mills and that, is the landscaping part of the contract with them, like the mowing and stuff by Twenty, and do you know when they're going to start, like, mowing that down and planting some plantings, or not?
I believe the, the Twenty, that's the state highway, so from the fence that you see for Yukon inside, that, that would be Yukon's property, but from the fence to the road, that would be the state's responsibility to mow.
Okay, because that's getting tall and it, it just looks bad.
I have noticed, I have noticed areas around town, Twenty and Appleton, Twenty and Genoa, and the area going out of town that I, I don't know what, if the budget cuts some of it out, but they're, they're mowing about two strips and then they, they leave. So, I, I have no idea.
Yeah. Director Countryman's right. On Twenty and Appleton, by the mobile gas station, that's all state. And I had, I have requested that that be mowed. The contacts that we had in the past don't exist today, I don't know. I don't have them, all those contacts, but we'll continue to point them out as well as the one that you mentioned, so. All right, any other questions for Mr. Countryman? All right, thank you, Kip.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, item B, planning, zoning, department update. Ms. Delros, good evening.
Good evening. So, there was two cases at Plan Commission that council approved at the last meeting, both for Project Yukon, the special use of the replat. Tanner Industries is moving forward tomorrow on their rezoning, their annexation's on the agenda tonight. Site plan reviews for the projects that Kip mentioned, mostly for ones going out by Walmart, Jersey Mike's, and O'Reilly's. Zoning letters are still holding strong. There are some industrial properties that are changing hands, so we'll see what that holds for the future. Historic preservation review, the facade grant applications that are on the agenda as well tonight, and obviously, staff was busy with Heritage Days and assisting other agencies in the county with some projects.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Delros, Alderman Snow?
So, question for you at this point. I noticed that the fast fuel, or whatever they were called, or whatever they're now called, stations have, appeared to have shut down. And I just happened to glance at the one over by the post office that it says it has slots, and we probably did approve that. But at that point, do we keep track or can we keep track of when those entities are not using that and cease their special use and, no offense, allow somebody else to be able to pick up on one that, to make it available?
Yep. So, yes, fast fuel is restructuring. They do, I believe they do intend to reopen, but they are restructuring right now, so you will see, some of them are just basically convenience stores, but yeah, there's no gas, alcohol, or gaming going on. With the gaming, if it is sixty days, it, it does go back into the, the general pool. Once I know something's completely shut down and wasn't like a blip, for instance, there's one in town where a car drove through the front, so they got to get that fixed. I'm not really holding that against them. It's not like they shut down, you know, it's a car drove into them. So, but I do keep track, and if it's sixty days up, I'll consult with Sarah. Right now, since gaming was increased to fifty, there's, there's plenty in, you know, in the kiddie pool. So, it's not like there's one, another pre-approved location eagerly waiting for that license to hold up. But, but yeah, we are monitoring them to see what they're going to do.
We actually routinely check the returns from the State of Illinois Gaming Board that tell us when the machines were last used, if we can determine that way for that time period.
And speaking of such things, since that comes up, and as probably a finance director, back in the day, we used to get reports on what the revenues were from the state on those gamings, either quarterly or every six months or yearly, but it seemed like we used to get that. I was wondering if we could get that as long as it came up in conversation.
Gina, what is our, what is our count at right now? Is it forty-three?
You know, I bring that spreadsheet with me to, like, every meeting, and no one ever asks. Now that you guys are asking about it, I don't have that spreadsheet.
I would say we still have forty.
I think we have forty-one or forty-two licenses issued, another five special use approved, but I know two of them are having difficulty at the state level. But we are not at fifty for either the special use request or issues licensed.
Okay. Sorry, sorry I put you on the spot. I should have asked. It seemed like I recalled forty-three, but anyhow, and as long as you mentioned the Heritage Days, I, I did forget to thank Alderwoman Gramkowski and Alderwoman Frank, both of you on the float, handed out candy and walked through the parade. I appreciate it. There may have been some other aldermen there that I did not, I did not see. Alderman Albertini, I know you were there.
Yes, I was, sir.
But I didn't see all of you perhaps there, but I do know that you were on the float, and I appreciate it. Also, Corey Thornton, our treasurer, Corey Thornton, he was on the float with his family and they, as well. And my three grandchildren were on the float. Well, they were actually out front, and they were handing out candy as well. So, it was a nice event, and thank you, Gina, for all the hard work, because it doesn't just magically appear. Our Heritage Days, it just doesn't magically appear. It takes a lot of hard work, and I know you put a lot of effort in it, so thank you for that, I appreciate it. Item C, the Downtown Facade Improvement Grant Program. Item in your packet from Gina Delros is a memo dated June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, that is regarding the Downtown Facade Improvement Grant Program. Gina?
Yeah, so this year's going to be really easy, because we only got four valid applications. And out of those applications, the total requested funds is twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty-nine, and we had over twenty-seven thousand to, to give out, so everyone can be fully funded and not have to debate, which makes me happy after the last couple of years we've had. So, the four applications received were five twenty-nine, six oh-one, South State Street, that is the Illinois Vehicle Insurance Building with the one next to it. I will say, last year, he missed the deadline for the grant application and did pretty extensive work on the, the backside that faces the alley, tuck pointing, new windows, redoing in addition, and he did that all with his own money. So, this year, he is hoping to tuck point and repaint the front, especially around the sidewalk, where, you know, rear interior people kicking it, stuff like that, it tends to crumble quicker. Five thirty South State Street, which is Julie's Diamond Art, no, I'm sorry, five thirty South State Street, which is the old Belvidere Bank Building years ago, it was tuck pointed, wasn't really, we did not fund that tuck pointing project. They did not use the most appropriate grout for that tuck pointing, and it really stands out, so they want to fix that. They also want to fix some of the window sills and stuff like that. One twelve to one fourteen West Pleasant Street is the, the building that kind of has that angled front facade. The upper story siding is, is completely dilapidated, falling off. The limestone is in not good shape at all, so they want to seal the limestone so it doesn't deteriorate further, put more appropriate siding up, and patch up the roof. And then six fifteen South State Street, which is Julie's Diamond Art, again, tuck pointing, especially around the foundation where it gets kicked and stuff, and repainting it. So, all four projects were approved by Historic Preservation. They are appropriate, they meet the downtown overly design requirements, and staff recommends approval of all of them for a total of twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars.
I'd make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens, thank you both. Any questions? I guess it's a good predicament, a better predicament to be in this year with not asking more for what we have, so.
Yes, it seems like we get one year where it's like fifteen applications, and then it's a big debate, and tough choices have to be made, and then it's a, a small year. So, it's, it's the small year of this year.
Great. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Questions, Alderman Freeman?
Thank you. So, Gina, people can just keep coming back every year, right? Like, there is no limit on if you own a building business downtown, as long as you're willing to put part of your money in, you can continue to repeat every year to come to the city and ask for some matching funds, right?
It's every three years. And I actually received three applications from people that did not qualify, because they were not in that three-year gap. Two of them will be able to do it next year. So, yes, every three years, in the past, when we've had more applications and, than we could have funding, we have decided those, the council had decided those that got funding before weren't prioritized as much as those not funded. But yes, every three years, you can request, for instance, Flowerbin has received funding twice. Taft Insurance has received funding twice. It all depends on the request and the available funds. But yes, every three years.
Okay, and then I had something else, but I just forgot. Sorry.
Okay. If you think of it before we get too far, holler. Is there any other, any other questions, any other comments regarding the motion on the floor? And that motion is to recommend the City Council to approve the following grant awards for a total of twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars. If there are no other questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. All right, and we have item D, located at twenty-one ninety-three and twenty-two eleven Hockey Drive, regarding Tanner Industries' annexation. There's a memo in your packet regarding that. It was the Project Kelly development that extended the city's waterline to Hockey Drive, allowing Tanner Industries the ability, the ability to be able to connect. So, regarding this, I guess I would turn it over to the city attorney for any comments that he might have.
Actually, I was going to throw it back to Gina, because for some reason, I was not involved in this one as much as usual. It is an annexation that's been popping around for five or ten years. These are two vacant lots next to the existing company, and they simply need to expand storage and other areas, so they're seeking to bring lots in now, but I will let Gina talk about the rest of it.
Yeah, so in two thousand and seventeen, I believe, Tanner Industries annexed into the city. They're, they're a longstanding county business, they annexed into the city. Their goal at that time was to connect to city water. Right now, they have to truck in their water and then purify it, and I will let the applicant talk about those costs if he wants to, but it is crazy. So, their goal was to, to connect on to city water and sewer. At that time, it wasn't really close by, and to extend it down to them from the corner was not financially feasible. Since then, with Project Kelly and having to do a loop, the water goes right down Hockey Drive, so they have water right in front of them now. And the old bakery building next to them came up for sale, they purchased it, so their goal is to turn that into basically like a water treatment facility. So, they'll pump, they'll pump water out of that, go through an osmosis filtration system, and then use it for the ammonia production just east of them. It will be definite cost-saving. It will also allow them to remove the giant water tanker thing on their property and filtering system, which will clear up some space. It also allows them to extend the parking area and drive from the, the property being discussed tonight to Tanner, which gives the fire department additional access to that property and more maneuvering room. So, it not only helps them solve their water demand needs, that is basically strengthening their ability to grow and serve their customers, but it will also allow for some rearrangement of the way their property's currently laid out. That will improve public safety as well.
I guess it would be, did you want to talk about the motions on the memo? Gina?
Yes, so there will be, hold on.
I have them.
There's two motions.
I have them, Gina.
Okay.
I'm, I have them. So, number one would be a motion to approve the annexation agreement between the city of Belvidere and Tanner Industries relating to twenty-one ninety-three and twenty-two eleven Hockey Drive in Belvidere, Illinois, as we discussed. If I could have a motion on the floor for discussion, motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you both. And the applicant is here as well from Tanner Industries. Questions, Alderman Freeman?
Thank you. So, I have a reverse osmosis system at my house, but I'm just curious as to what a building treatment, reverse osmosis system, like, is and does, and how big is that, and like, what do you service?
Sir, sir, would you mind coming up here, if you don't mind, and just stating your name for the record, please? Thank you for coming this evening.
Yes, my name is John Long. I'm Director of Operations-
I'm Director of Operations with Tanner Industries. To answer your question, it's about as big as the desk at the end where the police chief and fire chief and Gina are sitting. What it is, it's a series of high-pressure filter membranes, basically. And you take the city water and you push it through at a very high pressure and it strips out the minerals and salts and things that are naturally occurring in the water, allowing us to be able to purify that to a level that we can use to make high purity ammonium hydroxide.
Okay, and then you are gonna supply Project UConn?
No ma'am, this is for our internal use. We have the building next door where we currently make ammonium hydroxide. It's a mixture of water and ammonia. And what we have to do now is we have a well on site that we have to bring in trailer loads of basically resin, DI resin, that we use to do the water purification, which has gotten extremely expensive over the years. And it's put us at a disadvantage in the marketplace. So our intent is to purify water, put it in holding tanks inside the new building and then use that to feed our operation.
Their business will be, they're a water user, they'll be a big water user, which I think Mr. Anderson would probably want to comment on that, I imagine. I know I've always said, you know, one of the things that the city of Belvedere has is they have affordable water. And businesses who wanna, businesses like Tanner who actually annex to the city, they want to expand their business and they want to use our water, that's a good thing. But Mr. Anderson, did you have any comments or?
No, just looking forward to having them in town and being able to satisfy what the demands they need and we hope for using, you know, like maybe a million gallons a day or something at some point.
For clarification's sake, Mr. Mayor, this is not a new business, it's an existing business that's already in town. They're just gonna keep doing the same work they've been doing along. It just allows them to more economically obtain the materials they need to do to continue doing that business. So nothing really new, just a place to get the water purified.
Any other questions, does that answer your question?
Yeah. What types of non-hazmat items are you looking to store in the other building?
It would be like empty drums, 55-gallon drums. We do small packaging of the ammonium hydroxide, so new drums would be stored there. Valves, piping, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
And that condition is put in at the city's request to make sure because some of the work they do at the other site does create hazardous materials, we didn't want that to expand.
Correct.
Yes. Any other questions for Mr. Long, Alderman Snow?
So in the overall scheme of things, them coming into the city, they fall under our new, our codes and things like that. And I don't know if you have sprinkler systems or already in place or you tap into our water for that. Or being it's a, you know, hazardous type thing, I didn't know what the scoop was there.
With regard to the new building?
Yes.
Yes, it's not currently sprinkled. And since it would be for water purification and storage, we had not planned on sprinkling it. There would be no hazmat material in that building.
I don't know if that.
No, the fire department and the building department were in the conversations when they approached the city about annexing the other two lots next to the current business operation. And I believe, I'm not answering for Chief Shado, but both departments are comfortable with the current operation, the way things are going.
And not necessarily for Mr. Long, but I see Exhibit J in our packet. That appears to be the infamous impact fees. So just thought we'd make mention of that.
The vast majority don't apply. In fact, they all don't apply except for tornado siren, Public Works Police Fire and Administration impact fee, I think one other. The key ones, school, park, conservation, don't really apply. The only reason they're there is if by some weird freak of nature down the road, somebody converts the property to residential, then they would apply, but not likely.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Long? All right, thank you, sir. Thank you for coming this evening. And thank you for expanding your business. So we have a motion on the floor then to approve the annexation agreement between the city of Belvedere and Tanner Industries relating to 2193 and 2211 Hockey Drive, Belvedere, Illinois, 61008. If there are no other questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And then the second part of that is a motion to annex a territory consisting of 2193 and 2211 Hockey Drive in Belvedere, Illinois, 61008. That would be a motion, please, if I could get it. Motion by Alderman Flurry, thank you, second by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you both. Any questions regarding the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you very much. Moving on, Public Works unfinished business, we have none this evening. Item four, Public Works new business. Item A, Public Works Department update, Director Anderson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Newburgh Road Resurfacing Project is basically completed. There's a few punchless items the contractor will be working on, but that should be all wrapped up hopefully by the end of this week. And then the remainder of our overlay program will be starting next Monday with milling and prep work. And they'll be in the following Monday for paving. And that information will be, should be put on the city's website as well as we'll put out door-to-door notices in those neighborhoods and those streets that are affected with the overlay work. And that's all I have for an update.
I got a question.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Anderson, Alderman Snow?
Just since we were talking about mowing the state properties earlier, the big retention area next to Belvedere High School, we as a city are responsible for that and that looks pretty bad.
Correct, we've mowed the perimeter because of the amount of rain and stuff. We haven't been able to really get down on the bottom to mow it. Once it dries out enough sufficient to allow us to do that, we will do that. But yeah, we'll try to maintain the top edge as much as we can.
All right, Alderman Albertini?
Thank you. I just have a quick question. On the way here today, I come in downstate, there was four blocks that were closed. Was that just for a water break or something or was that scheduled maintenance?
I'm not aware specifically, but my guess would be it's probably the water main repair.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So I don't know if this is you, Brent, or if this is I dot or who controls this, but coming from the new truck stop, if you're at the light that, you know, if you go straight, you hit the tollway. If you go left, you're heading back towards Walmart into town. That left turn lane light doesn't switch and Shane, cover your ears, I've actually had to run that three times.
Okay, we can redo that.
I'm just saying, you're not gonna get people at Wingstop and, you know, out there frequenting it if they're gonna have to break the law to go home.
We can check that.
No, and I remember when they had the opening out there, the opening for the marijuana dispensary and also when they had the when they had the dirt, moved the first dirt out there as well, that never changed, that light never changed. And I did, I think that was on our radar, but it obviously hasn't been repaired, so. Yep. Any other questions for Director Anderson? Okay. All right, and then item B, wastewater treatment, 4B wastewater treatment plant pre-treatment program, local limits evaluation in your packet is a memo from Director Anderson dated July 2 of 2024 regarding the pre-treatment program, the local limits evaluation. And I know there has been, I think, four changes maybe that are on there, but Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. The pre-treatment local limits evaluation report has been reviewed by the US EPA Region 5 and they agree with the report's recommendations on the local limits and their correspondence that's attached. Prior to final approval by US EPA, the city council is required to adopt an ordinance revising the local limits and a resolution accepting the revised local limits. I would recommend approval of the attached ordinance and resolution revising the pre-treatment local limits to fulfill special condition number 10, section A, part 8 of the city of Belvedere's permit, IL 0027685.
Okay, if I could have a motion to that effect, anybody? Motion by Alderwoman Mohal, second by Alderman Albertini, thank you both. Questions, Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So I see that our total suspended solids is going from our current limit of none to the new limit of 1,950 is it milligrams per liter? How is that gonna affect our operations, if at all?
So we have a pre-treatment program and we have surcharges that we apply and our limit on surcharges is anything over 200 milligrams per liter. So the establishment of this upper limit is for the capability of finding companies as far as for that purpose. And that was something that was basically required through US EPA, so that's how that was established. The only one that is in that area of could be a concern would be Dairy Farmers of America. And we are working with them specifically to address those issues. And as long as we are doing that and we have best management practices in place, then that won't be an issue for them.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Director Anderson? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And we have.
Can we get you separate?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, that was for the ordinance then. And we would have, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the resolution revising the pre-treatment local limits to fulfill special conditions. Motion by Alderman Stevens, thank you, second by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you. City attorney has his pen up.
And if you're questioning why we're doing this, there's no good reason to do it, it's completely unnecessary. Other than the state wants us to, because it's basically completely repetitive.
Well, in this case, it's the federal, so it goes above the state.
Even worse.
Well, we will comply. All right, if there's no other questions regarding the motion on the floor, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you for that.
And just one final note, the local limits evaluation is required of us every five years. So you'll be seeing this again in another five years.
Okay, thank you for that. Sarah, appreciate it. Item 4C, manhole adjustment request, design engineering. In your packet is a memo from Director Anderson dated July 2 of '24. That being manhole adjustment project, design engineering for that, Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, memo in your packet, our current budget includes $300,000 for manhole adjustments. This project will repair approximately 150 to 200 manholes that have been identified by the street department as needing repair. These are mostly settlement issues of the pavement around the manholes, not specifically the manholes themselves. Although a few of the manholes will have to be reconstructed at the top portion as well. But these are ones that have been indicated by our employees causing issues with us for snow removal process and hard on the equipment and so forth. So this will do, we did some of the streets, the overlay streets that we picked this year were to take care of some of the manhole locations and this is supplemental to that. And again, we'll have more of, next year's list on the overlay list will be more manholes to make the repair. The repair will consist of a four-by-four diamond-shaped concrete collar around those manholes and then the required asphalt paving around that to make it all blend in. So each one of these locations will have to be elevations taken and some drawings done up quick to determine those limits and what needs to be done. And we have received a memo from, a proposal from CES in the amount of $35,000 to complete the design engineering and the bid documents for the manhole adjustment project. This work will be done later this fall before the winter season. I would recommend approval of the proposal from CES in the amount of $35,000 to complete the engineering for the manhole adjustment project. And this work will be paid for from line 4151108020.
Okay, if I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. Any questions, Alderman Snow?
So as you guys go through and I see the manholes and every time you do an overlay, we obviously don't readjust those heights because that's an extensive deal. Do we take that into account, which ones we're gonna do initially? That we either going to be doing an overlay next year or two years down the road that we wouldn't do an unnecessary fix at this point?
Correct, that's how we laid this out so that these are supplemental to what ones are gonna be done through the overlays. And as far as on the overlay program, we actually do adjust them. We either use adjustment rings or if we can just mill it and go around it and suffice, we can do that as well. But yes, we do adjust some manholes on our overlays every year.
Thank you. Any other questions for Director Anderson regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And moving on, we have item 4D in your packet, a memo from Director Anderson dated July 2 regarding a 15-minute parking request located at 520 South State Street, Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet, we received a request to consider creating 15-minute parking in front of the Moscato's Pizza at 520 South State Street. Copy of their message to me is attached. They were looking for two to three 15-minute spots. After stopping out there and reviewing the area and talking to them, I would recommend that the first stall north of Logan Avenue on the east side of South State Street be designated as a 15-minute parking as shown on the attached map. An ordinance will be required to establish the 15-minute parking stall. We chose that corner one just for ease in and out for that 15-minute parking and they were in favor of that.
If I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, thank you, second by Alderman McGee, thank you. Any questions, any comments, Alderman Snow?
Will we wind up drawing attention to that particularly when it's first in? Because most people that frequent that area aren't gonna be used to it. I don't know, flashing light or whatever.
We will put a flag on the sign for the 15-minute parking.
Alderman Albertini?
Thank you. This is that spot marked in green on the drawing, correct?
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna be putting a sign there, designating 15-minute parking for them?
That's correct.
Will this be paid for by the city or by the Moscato's?
The sign will be paid for by the city.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, then the motion on the floor is to is to designate the first stall north of Logan Avenue on the east side of South State Street, designated as a 15-minute parking as shown on the attached map. An ordinance will be required to establish the 15-minute parking stall. If there are no other questions, Alderman Snow?
So I guess at this point, and obviously Brent, that won't have anything to do with this, but I'm assuming the pizza place is going to need to quasi-monitor it themselves. So if they see a vehicle there, they're going to need to. need to quasi-monitor it themselves, so if they see a vehicle there, they're going to need to make a call on the non-emergency number to the Police Department to see about tracking who it is and have them relocate their vehicle and/or ticket if it becomes an issue.
Correct.
And we have, on the other side of State Street, we have a pizzeria that also has the same setup there as well, so they have one stall, I believe. And so this would be similar to what is down on State Street on the, on the north end. Alderwoman Freeman?
So I think that Lung Fung's has that one spot, and then whatever pizza place is up the street from them. What I see the difference is, does Moscato's have parking in the back? Because they're like right next to Spanish Grocery Store, are they not, right there, and some other businesses, it might take longer than 15 minutes?
I couldn't tell you what, how they're, got their setup access-wise in the back for parking and/or those individuals that they did park in the back to get to the front or get through the store, so I don't think there's any back entrance or anything from Moscato's that they have to come around.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And anybody opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item 4E would be tree grant, tree inventory canopy assessment and urban forestry management plan, and your memo, in your packet is a memo from Director Anderson dated July 3rd of 2024. That being the tree grant and the forestry management plan. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet, as you recall, last meeting, the council approved the grant award to do, to complete this work. Attached to this memo is a proposal from Great Lakes Urban Forestry to complete the comprehensive tree inventory and urban forestry management plan required as part of our 2024 Illinois Urban and Community Forest Program administered by the Morton Arboretum. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Great Lakes Urban Forestry in the amount of $69,600 to complete the tree inventory canopy assessment and urban forestry management plan for the city. This work will be paid for from grant funds. This proposal was included in our application, and it was reviewed and approved by Morton Arboretum.
Thank you, Director Anderson. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, thank you. Second by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. Any questions, any comments? Alderman Snow?
So do we, is this something that we don't necessarily go out to bid, but are there other entities that do this that we looked at or got feedback on?
Correct, this is professional services, isn't any, any other engineering work that is done. So we looked at, I think there was three or four firms, we decided to go with, with Great Lakes because of their work with the Belvidere Park District, and they actually completed their tree inventory and tree management plan. And they were, spoke highly of them, so that's what led us in that direction.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again. So, they're going to go the residential streets, correct? And will they mark for either removal and/or replacement of the trees on the terrace that are so big that the roots are tearing up sidewalks in front of people's houses?
They will, they will basically do an inventory of every tree within, on city-owned property. So in the right-ofways, all the property that's owned by the City of Belvidere, they will do an inventory of each of those trees. They'll do identify species, they'll take measurements, they'll do a rating of those trees, what those conditions are, what the recommendations are. So yeah, that'll be all part of the report that is done. They will even then look at the open space that's in the city that the city owns and determine, as the canopy assessment determine how many trees, different things that could be done to maximize the canopy coverage for the City of Belvidere. And then they'll include also the plan and their recommendations on how to manage that resource going forward, which is something that we've never ever had.
So, so that would include marking for you guys the ones that are tearing up sidewalks or ones that are overhanging power lines that ComEd has butchered up, stuff like that?
They will, they will identify those, nothing will be marked in the field, but they will identify those and through the report, and this will all be done through GIS, and it'll become another GIS layer that's on our, on our system.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding the motion on the floor for Director Anderson? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. Item F, is the wastewater treatment plant sludge heaters replacement, and your packet was a memo from Director Anderson dated July 2nd of 24 regarding the the work that needs to be done at the wastewater treatment plant. And I think we all know that everything down at the wastewater treatment plant is very, very expensive, in this case, there's no difference. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor, and actually, 5A deals with the same subject, American Rescue Plan Act funds, WWTP sludge heaters. So if you look at the memo that was prepared from Ms. Hanson about the use of the American Rescue Plan funds, it indicates, it shows you what the, what the summary to data, what it's been used for, for the ARPA. And we've received $3.4 million in ARPA funds, leaving an available balance of a little over $1 million. And we have until December 31st of 2024 to earmark those remaining funds, and until December 31st of 2026 to actually use them. The two sludge heaters at our wastewater human plant need to be replaced, and the estimated cost to do that work is $1 million. So I would recommend to approve the use of 1 million of ARPA funds in FY '25 for costs associated with the replacement of two sludge heaters at the wastewater treatment plants. That'll be motion number one.
If I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Stevens, thank you. And a second by Alderman McGee, thank you both. Any questions, any comments? Alderman Snow?
So at this point, we're approving the ARPA fund usage, so we're kind of going out of order, or no?
Correct, but my, yes, but we need to do this memo in order then for me to talk about the next one as far engineering work that's needed to begin that process on the sludge heaters.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, question with the ARPA money, so when it comes to the sewer plant, the sewer plant by its own definition has a funding source of, we could, in order to pay for these kind of expenses, increase the rate ever so slightly or to help offset some of the cost. Where a lot of the fundage for the fire department, police department, and other things, and I'm just throwing this out there for discussion purposes, that some of that ARPA money might be better used in those departments, whether it's to buy new squads, equipment, whatever, that, that they, we wouldn't have funding sources for, to be able to offset, just tossing it out there.
I will say that, you know, we tried to evaluate, prioritize the need, the fact that this, the replacement of these were actually overdue, and everything down there is expensive. We also have divvied up some of the funds regarding the fire department, regarding the police department. I would rather not, if we don't have to, I would rather not pass a increase along to the residents if we have money for one big project, and in this case, we tried to identify what would be the best big priority project that we could get off the plate. There are other ones, don't get me wrong, but this one here is, if the toilet doesn't flush, if people think they're having phone calls about garbage, believe you me, that's a big deal. So we thought we identified something that would be a project that we could sweep off, we could complete from start to finish, and that would satisfy the amount of ARPA funds that we have left and be able to not pass that expense on. I think that was the intent, was for the city to prioritize what we could be able to, what we would be able to start and complete. And we tried to pick the project accordingly, so that's the history behind it.
And I can add too, that council has previously approved, has listed in the memo there, both water projects and a sewer project for funding, using the ARPA funds. We've also increased, we've had the first round of increases, the first of the year, through the budgetary process for both a water rate increase and a sewer rate increase. The second step of those will be coming at our next committee, next month's committee meeting for the second round, and then per my budgetary memo, there'll be a third round on the Santa Sewer End to pay for the current project, our 2018 improvement project that is finally ramping up to do that low-interest loan. The, the sludge heaters were an item, and our final clarifiers are going to be our next item. That's been identified as part of about a $4 million project, which is why we're doing the, you approved the, the planning process on the treatment plant to get that done, so we can submit that to IEP, which will qualify us then for another low-interest loan for the final clarifiers, so that'll cause another rate increase on the sewer side to fund that project. So it felt at this time that the million dollars available to us through ARPA funds would be appropriate.
Thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again, Mayor. So I think this is an absolutely appropriate use for these funds and exactly what they were meant to be used for. My question for you, Brent, is that in 2.3 of this attachment A is the engineer's opinion of probable cost, so how are they estimating it at a million dollars if they haven't actually done the estimation yet? And being so that only leaves a little more than 21,000 left in our ARPA funds, are you confident that the million dollars is going to be enough? And if it's less than that, then what happens to those funds that we have already allocated to you?
So in each of the projects where we've allocated ARPA funds, it'll be based on what the final numbers are, the 600,000 Southwest, I think is a definite number. The first section of 700,000 on the clarifier upgrades is a definite number, the 816,000, because we haven't finished that project yet, that'll be, that'll be, it could vary from that. And likewise with, with this recommended project, that's a budgetary number that we got from Baxter and Woodman. Those tend to be high on the, on the cautious side. So when they actually go through and do everything, that'll come up with a final number, but it's expected to be around a million dollars. And then the engineering, as we'll discuss in our next memo, is 158,000, so that already indicates that we're going to be paying that with sewer funds and not ARPA funds.
Thank you. Who else had their hand up? Somebody else had their hand up. Alderman Albertini?
Thank you. So I see we have $21,356.69 left of this ARPA fund. It's just a suggestion, but maybe we can put on an agenda to use that money to redo the furniture in this room.
Okay, let's see what, let's see what these come in at, because as Brent had pointed out in the memo on the, on 5A, those are all probably going to come in, I hope, under, you never know. I mean, we've had bids that have come in over, and for many different things. And if we have that money left over, we can certainly decide the most prudent way to spend it then, that'll be up to the council, so. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any other questions on the motion on the floor? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And Mr. Anderson?
Okay, and then going back to my sludge heaters replacement memo, our two 1985 Envirex sludge heaters are aged, undersized, and need to be replaced. As we talked about, the estimated cost is a million dollars. Our 300, our current 300 BTU units will be replaced with 500 BTU units. Attached for this proposal is a proposal from Baxter and Woodman in the amount of $158,000 to provide engineering design, bid documents, and construction services for replacing the two sludge heaters. I would recommend of the approval of the proposal from Baxter and Woodman, and this work will be paid for from ARPA funds.
Okay, motion by Alderman Snow, thank you. And a second, anybody? Second by Alderman Stevens, thank you both. Any questions or comments regarding the motion on the floor? Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. On the first memo, says that the city will pay the cost of engineering. Then this motion just said that ARPA funds is going to cover that, which one is it?
So it'll, it'll be a million dollars either way, so we'll either make up the balance on construction with our monies or the engineering monies, so it's, it can be done, we can do it either way, so. One way or the other, we're going to spend a million dollars on the ARPA funds. So there was, it was, it was the right hand and the left hand didn't communicate. I wrote my memo for this part, and then Shannon wrote her memo, so we can put down construction for ARPA and we'll use our monies for the engineering. It would come out a 611790 depreciation.
Okay.
For the 158,000 for depreciation.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? Alderman Flurry, does that, you look like you still have more questions?
If it all works out monetarily, then fine, but just one says that we're using a milling, and then we're having an additional 158,000, so you're saying if it goes past a million, we'd pay for the engineering, but if it doesn't go past a million, that engineering would be covered by the million?
So the key, I guess, is, is we need to utilize those ARPA funds by end date specific, so the engineering, of course, is the first part of the process. So typically, I would use ARPA funds to pay for that engineering, and then pay for up to a total of a million dollars worth of ARPA funds for construction. And then if there's anything else needed, we would take care of that out of our sewer funding. Shannon, when she wrote her memo, she just made it construction, a million dollars, and then engineering would pay for that, so. In my mind, it doesn't really matter, because if the intent is to make sure that we expend our monies in a timely fashion for ARPA, that the engineering would be paid for ARPA, but we can pay for it out of 611790, there should be no problem. Getting this project completed by the requirement deadline of utilizing ARPA funds, the only thing that's unknown at this point is how long of a lead time for ordering of a new boiler is it going to be?
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
And when we look at the deadline to be able to have the ARPA funds or earmark the remaining ARPA funds, it's December 31st of 2026 to use them. Anything that transpires down at wastewater treatment plant, this in particular is a, it's a big project, takes a lot of planning, the engineering and what have you, so, you know, it's not like it's going to happen overnight, but at least this allows us to earmark the money and then move forward on a priority basis. Alderman Snow?
So Brent, what does the, what does it do for us going from the 300 to the 500?
So it's just, it's a more capacity, larger capacity, so as our usage at the treatment plant increases, the requirements increase as well, to be able to treat that sludge, and the sludge heaters, they actually maintain the temperature between, I think it's 95 and 110 degrees, which is the optimum needed for the bugs and things to do, to process things the way it's supposed to be processed and designed, and that's their function. So going with the bigger units will be more efficient for us, actually, and be able to better maximize the capabilities based on our flows that we're seeing.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Director Anderson? Okay, hearing none, we have motion on the floor then. The approval of, of the proposal from Baxter and Woodman in the amount of 158,000 for the engineering design and construction services to complete the sludge heater, heaters replacement at the wastewater treatment plant. And this work will be paid for by the ARPA funds, I guess, we'll leave that to be determined.
611790 is.
611790?
We'll do it that way.
Okay, 6117.
And if there's a left, maybe the fire police can...
We have, we'll be able to bid on all kinds of things, including furniture, so, maybe paint, I don't know. Anyhow, we have that motion. If there's no other questions... maybe paint, I don't know, anyhow, we have that motion, if there's no other questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you, moving to five other, item A has been taken care of regarding the American Rescue Plan Act funds, specifically for the wastewater treatment sludge heaters. Five B, Police Department National Night Out, street closure request, in your packet is a memo dated July 8th from Chief Woody regarding the National, National Night Out this year, which will take place on Tuesday, August 6th, Chief Woody?
Thank you, Mayor, the Police Department this year is planning an event in Big Thunder Park for National Night Out on August 6th, for those of you that don't know, National Night Out's an annual nationally celebrated community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships, we plan on having food and activities for the kids, as well as display of first responder vehicles along North Main Street, which brings me to a request to close North Main Street from Perry Street to Menominee from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM for National Night Out on August 6th.
Okay, very good, if I could have a motion to that effect, please, motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you both, any questions for Chief Woody regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And also, item C in your packet is a memo dated July 8th of 24 from Chief Woody, motion to accept donations, Chief?
Thank you, again, Mayor, so we've had a couple of donations to the Police Department, specifically to the K-9 unit, one from Myers Kennel Inc. in the amount of $528, the second from Midland States Bank in the amount of $100, I would request a motion to accept a donation of $528 from Myers Kennel Inc., and the donation of $100 from Midland States Bank to be used as requested for the purchase of supplies or equipment for our K-9 unit.
Okay, motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you both, any questions regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you, and Chief, please tell Myers Kennel and Midland Bank, please express to them our appreciation for their donation, very nice of them, on behalf of the City Council and City of Belvedere.
Will do, Mayor, thank you.
All right, that's all we have on the agenda this evening, could I have a motion to adjourn, please, motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski, second by Alderman McGee, thank you, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody wanna stay, all right, for the record, we adjourned at 7:33 PM, thank you everybody, have a good evening.